Okay, I've got seven o'clock, so I'm gonna call to order the November ninth meeting of the Shelby Township Planning Commission and ask the secretary, when she unmutes, to call the roll, please. Now, you're still, Raquel, you're still muted. There you go.
Mr. Dallow? Absent, Mr. Seco?
Here.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Here.
Mr. Meredith?
Here.
Mr. Turner?
Here.
Mr. Oppone?
Here.
Mr. Flynn?
Here.
Chairman Moffett, we have a quorum.
Great, thank you. The next item is the approval of the agenda. Let me just indicate, and then for everyone that's on the line, that we'll be removing, unless there's objection from the board, item number, the fourth item, the rezoning petition, zero, number zero, one dash two, zero, Demiano, Demiano, Demi, any, Democurio. It's been requested that it, there's a, they want to offer a different petition, so they're not, they've indicated they're not going to proceed this evening with that request, so. If or when another submission is submitted, same individuals, if you receive notice of this meeting, you will receive another notice. If somehow you receive this through word of mouth, just make sure that you let, you know, contact the planning office and let me make sure to. So with that, move by Moore, is your support?
Support.
Support by DeSeco, any questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is approval of the minutes from the October twenty-sixth meeting.
Don't move.
Move by DeSeco, support by Turner, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. First item this evening is site plan number two, zero, dash, two, eight, John Chateau, six, zero, one, nine, Auburn Road, and this is a request for a non-conforming use. Typically, this is a public hearing, although there wasn't a notice published. Does the secretary have a copy of the application that she could read?
Uh, for Mr., oh, for Chateau?
Yeah.
No, I do not.
No, there, Jerry, this is Julie, there is no notice for this, so there's nothing really to read. We do notify the abutting property owners for Class A non-conforming use.
That's fine, that's fine, I mean, typically, well, I mean, our, our, our process is to, to, to read the application, and if you're telling me that, that we don't do that, that's fine. Let's, uh, proceed to the format for this public hearing. The petitioner will, or representative will state what they're requesting and their reasons for it. We'll then bring it back to the board for, for the commissioners to ask any questions. I'll then open up the public, if they have any questions or wish to make a comment, and then I'll let the petitioner offer any concluding remarks or answer their questions or respond to comments that are made. At this point, is the petitioner or the representative here? Mr. Chair, I'm gonna jump in, if there is anybody, a representative, and you're on your phone, you're gonna press star six to unmute yourself, star six. Hey, can you, there, I, I noticed there are a number of individuals that aren't muted, can, can, can we mute everybody and then just? Cause there's a little.
Can I say something?
Hang on, hang on. First to the petitioner? Mr. Chair, I can do one of two things, I can mute everybody, but what will happen, that it will remove their ability to unmute themselves. Alright. Which is fine, as long as the board members are, or the commission members are okay giving me, you know, a few seconds to unmute them during motions. Yeah, that's fine, and just, let's just explain that, you know, there are, there's a function where you can sort of raise your hand on your screen to, to recognize that, that you want to be, you wish to be recognized.
Mr. Chairman, I see we've got forty-one people in the audience, I think we've got a bunch of people waiting to speak on the item that was removed, so I don't know if that was sunk in with the audience.
Yeah, okay, then that's a good point.
So if you're here. Just kind of go over that again, the, yeah, the twenty-six mile and Van Dyke rezoning public hearing is canceled, so if you're in the audience waiting to speak on that, that's not gonna happen tonight. Just FYI.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn. And with that, is John Chateau or, or his, or her, his representative? Tell you what, this is, this is a fairly straightforward, Julie, do you want to maybe offer, or give, yeah, you, your review of this, and let's see, maybe, I think the board can likely take action with, maybe without a presentation, Jose.
Okay, thank you, Chairman. Mr. Chateau is requesting a Class A non-conforming use, and the reason for this designation is just in case his home burns down more than fifty percent, he can rebuild it in its normal state. Continuous, continuance of this use would not be contrary to the public health, safety, or welfare, or the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance. This property is surrounded by the St. Lawrence Cemetery, and, like I said, I don't really have any issues or concerns with giving this property the Class A non-conforming use designation.
Okay, is anyone at the board level having objections to us going forward, or have any questions? Seeing none on either point. We'll continue on with the public hearing. This is the only public hearing the planning commissioner will hold on this Class A non, non-conforming use request. All remarks will be considered and entered into the record. At this point, does anyone wish to offer a comment on this, or wish to speak for or against this request? Seeing none, I'll, I'll bring it. Mr. Chair, I think that was the opportunity for us to explain to folks how to virtually raise their hand.
Hello?
Oh, okay, yes, ma'am.
Um, I, I don't know if you guys went through this, but I'm talk, I just want to talk about the, uh, you know, that number eight, I think that's number eight, hang on, I'm sorry.
Overaddressing right now.
Number five to twenty. It says that we're supposed to be online at, today at seven o'clock, and it's, they want to put up duplexes.
So we're not, no, we've not, we've, we're, we're at the first item.
Okay, so we have not done it, okay.
We have not done it, alright. Okay, so folks, if you would like to speak to this item that the chair has brought up already, you've got a few options to raise your virtual hand. If you're using a computer, you're gonna go down to the bottom where it says participants, click that, and then that opens up a dialogue box, and you can press raise virtual hand. If you're on a smartphone, press the small three dots in the lower right-hand corner of your screen, that will then give you an option to raise virtual hand. And if you're on a phone or cellphone, you're gonna press star nine to tell us you'd like to speak. Once you are chosen to speak, you'll press star six to unmute yourself, so star nine, and then star six. Okay, I think we'll go, going once, twice, three times for comment. Have we seen, no, no hands have gone up? Not a single one, sir. Okay, so I will bring it back to the board, we've heard from the planner. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Don't move.
It's been moved and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. So our recommendation on this must be based on the following standards. Continuance, continuance thereof would not be contrary to the pub, public health, safety, and welfare, or the spirit and intent of this ordinance. The use does not, and is not likely to significantly depress the value of nearby property. The use was lawful at the time of its inception, and that no useful purpose would be served by strict application of the provision or requirements of this ordinance, which the use does not conform. Is there, at this point, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Sorry. I'd like to make a motion to approve the Class A non-conforming use application for the property at six, zero, one, nine, Auburn Road, based on the following findings. Number one, the continued use of the existing single-family home will not negatively impact any abutting land uses. Number two, the Class A designation would allow the applicant to rebuild the single-family home if destroyed by fire or other natural, natural disaster. And number three, there are no plans to develop the C two zone portion of the site for commercial, commercial purposes at this time. And number four, the size of the property limits the development of this property for a C two development.
Then moved by DeSeco, support by Turner, any questions on the motion, hearing none, Commissioner DeSeco?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Flynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Oppone?
Yes.
Commissioner Meredith?
Yes.
And the Chair will chess. So Julie, if you'll let the, the petitioner know that it was, it passed.
Will do, thank you, Chairman.
Great, thank you, next item is a special land use request. Special land, uh, site plan number two, zero, dash, two, seven, special land use number ten, Joel Ballard, four, seven, six, one, one, Ryan Road. This is a public, this is a public hearing, so we'll ask the secretary to read the notice that was published on this request.
Township of Shelby. Due to COVID nineteen pandemic, the public hearing will be held via Zoom. You may participate at no cost in the virtual meeting by calling the following number. Dial one, three, one, two, six, two, six, six, seven, nine, nine, meeting ID number eight, three, one, three, seven, six, six, nine, one, seven, five. Notice is hereby given that the planning commission for the charter township of Shelby, Macomb County, Michigan, has received a request for approval of the following special land use. Applicant Joel Baylor, five, seven, seven, six, zero, Main Street, New Haven, Michigan, four, eight, zero, four, eight. Proposed use outdoor storage of vehicles. Location forty-seven, six, eleven, Ryan Road, west side of Ryan Road, north of Auburn Road. Site plan number twenty, dash, twenty-seven, SLU, dash, ten. Civil number twenty-three, dash, zero, seven, dash, thirty, dash, four, twenty-six, dash, zero, eleven. Legal description is as follows. Planning Commission will meet on Monday, November ninth, two thousand twenty, at seven PM via Zoom for the purpose of holding a public hearing on the special land use. Please follow the instructions to attend the meeting via Zoom. Dial one, three, one, two, six, two, six, six, seven, nine, nine, and enter the meeting ID access code, eight, three, one, three, seven, six, six, nine, one, seven, five. Please check the Shelby Township Planning website for further information on the meeting. The application for the special land use may be examined at the Planning and Zoning Department in the municipal meeting building, Monday through Friday, from eight, three AM to five PM. Written comments may be submitted to the planning commission at the above address prior to the hearing. Oral comments will be heard during the public hearing. This notice is provided pursuant to the requirements of Michigan Public Act one-ten of two thousand six. As amended, Shelby Township Planning Commission, Jerome Moffett, Chair, Raquel Moore, Secretary. This was published in the Shelby Utica News on October twenty-first, first, two thousand twenty. There were thirty-one property owners, and two applicants were notified by first-class mail on October sixteenth, two thousand twenty.
Great, thank you. To the attorney, did the publication meet all legal requirements?
Yes, it does.
Great, and can you explain the uses under the present zoning, and if this special land use request is appropriate?
Yes, the, the uses under the present zoning do come, or I'm sorry, the proposed special land use would in fact comply based upon the special land use standards of, of the township ordinances, including section six point five, and this would be an appropriate special land use request.
Great, thank you. To the secretary, did we receive any correspondence on this request, on this request?
No, we did not, Mr. Chair.
Format for the public hearing, we'll, we will hear from the representative, the petitioner or representative stating what they're requesting, reasons for it, then bring it back to the board for the commissioners to ask any questions. Then we'll open it up to the public to offer, ask a question or offer a comment in for or against, and then finally allow the petitioner to make concluding remarks. At this point, is the petitioner or representative here to make a presentation?
Yes.
Okay, if you could state your name and address, please.
Hi, good evening, members of the commission, my name's Joel Ballard, my address is five, zero, three, three, Heatherman Lane, Shelby Township.
Okay, so what are you requesting, and?
Sure.
What are your reasons for it, please?
Sure, sure, so I'm, as, as indicated in the, by the secretary, I'm requesting the special land use on four, seven, six, one, one, Ryan Road. Owned Ballard's towing for the last, been part of the family business now for eighty-one years out of New Haven and Romeo. Last year, we purchased Quirccases Towing out of Shelby Township. We've been a township for twenty-five years. As such, we are towing vehicles for places like shopping centers and whatnot that are illegally parked, so we're looking for a lot to store them. I get customers' cars that break down during the week, or weekend, and we can't tow them out until Monday morning, so we need a place to store cars for that reason. Thirdly, tow for some police agencies, such as like Michigan State Police, it within the, within the township area, and it would allow us to have an ability to store impounded vehicles from this, from police departments.
Okay, so how, how much of the space are you gonna, how much of that, that space are you gonna use for your, your leasing, I assume, from the, the property owner?
Correct, as you can see on the site plan, I mean, I'm, I'm only seeking a, a very small portion of, like, I think it's a, measures like a hundred, a hundred, a hundred and fifty by two hundred, something like that, roughly for around a hundred cars. It's like a twelve-acre piece, and I'm, I'm taking a very, very, very small portion of that, and it sits, I don't know, roughly seven hundred to a thousand feet off of Ryan Road.
Okay, great. Uh, and shorter term, not, not long-term parking of these cars, or what's the, the, the average length of stay?
Uh, sure, I mean, it would be, I mean, it could be turned, turned, turned over as soon as a day, or, or it could be for a few months, but on average, I mean, by an average, less than, I mean, less than a few months on average, for sure.
Okay. Okay, to the board, are there any questions of the petition? Okay, hearing none. This is the only public hearing. The planning commissioner will hold on this special land use request, all remarks will be entered into the record for Township Board evaluation. We are recommending body, and the Township Board will evaluate our recommendation, which is the legislative body. The Township Board will make the final decision on the special land use request. At this point, it was, is free to offer any questions or their opinions in either support or, or favor or, or against what's being proposed. And again, you'll just need to, to sort of, to raise your hands. If you have a.
Hello?
Yes. If I get your name and address, please?
June Cable, four, seven, one, six, nine, Frederick Road. I have a couple of questions. First off, I'd like to know how long the lease is for, I don't know if he said that and I didn't catch it. More importantly, the storage of these vehicles, I am concerned of the, the possibility of oil, gas, transmission fluid leaching into the ground. That's already a very highly contaminated area, and nothing's being done to get it cleaned up, and we don't need it to be contaminated further. Most of us in this area have ground wells that we use for water. We're concerned about that, that leaching. I know that it has been previously approved for this type of operation, but I don't know if it was ever completed to do storage of this type of vehicles, as far as usually is recommended, or it is stated in, in the under the, under the township bylaws, that it needs to have particular types of ground cover via whatever, it's gravel or, or blacktop or something to contain that type of leaching. Like I said, I don't know if that's ever been done prior to this type of operation. Also, I'm concerned about the hours of operation. Are we gonna be hearing vehicles come in and out of this yard all night long, in, in any time, night or day? I'm concerned about especially reverse alarms that we seem to hear quite a bit in this area at any time of the night. It's rather annoying. Other questions I have, are there entrances and there exits to the property? I believe that there is a south entrance that is used by Synchory already, and there's a northern entrance that I think that they can gain access to that yard. My concern is are these entrances and exits going to be maintained? And what I mean by that is gravel coming in and out of the area, scattering onto the roadway that never seems to get addressed by the township of being cleaned up on a, on a regular basis. This, I've had a concern with, with all of the, the trucking companies and other things that we've had in and out of these lots in that area. With that, I think that is all I have on this particular issue.
Okay, thank you, is there anyone else that wishes? Going twice? Oh, we've got one that popped in, sir. Okay. Sharon Azora? And name and address, please.
Hi. Hi, my name is Sharon Azora, my address is four, seven, one, eight, four, Ryan Road. And my question is, you said that the, the storage yard was gonna be towards the back of the building, and the back of the lot. What's gonna happen in the front of the lot to be a buffer, to kind of block the view and make it presentable?
Okay, did you have any other questions?
No, I mean, that's really my only question, my concern is, you know, there was a, a truck yard in there before, and the diesel fuel was kind of overwhelming in the morning, so that was my only concern, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Anyone else wish to comment?
I see none.
Great, great. Bring it to, I asked the planner, Nick, you, you covered this one, your, your thoughts?
Yes. So I'll go over the site plan a little bit first, and I'll address the questions that I can address. So the outdoor storage yard is proposed, is fenced in. It is blocked from view of the road by the building in the front of the property, Synchory Landscaping Building. I provided a street view for the planning members to look at, to see if it adequately blocks the view. As far as the duration of the lease, that would be a question for the applicant. The hours of operation would also be a question for the applicant, I know that in my site plan review comments as well. And this site was previously approved for outdoor storage of vehicles and landscaping materials pertaining to the Synchory Landscaping Company on the site. So this would be in addition to that. And as far as the proposal goes, what I looked at, concentrated on was seeing how much of an impact it would have on traffic, and as Mr. Ballard said, the impact would be relatively minor, they expect about five vehicles incoming per day, so I don't see that increasing too much. The sites will be accessed by the drive on the south, per Mr. Cable's question. The drive to the north is for the property to the north, and does not connect into this property. Other than that, as far as my site plan review comments go, like I said, the hours were not stated for accessing the yard, I want to see that in the site plan. I need to see any indicated lighting that's proposed for the storage yard, or if there is no lighting proposed, just indicate that there will be none. And then lastly, currently is no valid, a strict zoning compliance for the property, so if this were to be approved, getting that zoning compliance for the property would be a condition of approval, that's all I have.
Okay. To the petitioner, the length of your lease with the landscape company?
We'd be operating with five years, five years.
Okay, thank you. The question on the contamination of, imagine that, I mean, does the DEQ monitor the storage of the vehicles, or, I mean, or what steps do you take to, to not allow the, the auto fluids to leach into?
Yes, certainly, we, we, we obviously take that very seriously, I mean, if we, it's been a very rare case that a car is leaching when we bring it in, it's, you know, we, we have a, we, we place a plastic device underneath the car to, you know, to harness it, and we, we have environmental booms, if you will, that, you know, that will soak up what, what's left. You know, we're obviously kind of, and we don't want to harm the environment, and we don't wanna, you know, it's not our property, we don't own the property, and we're certainly not going to be bad tenants.
Okay.
We understand the importance, I mean, we own our other lots that we have, and, and we definitely take that seriously.
Hours of operation?
We're, we're a twenty-four-hour day, seven-day-a-week operation, um, but to the point in what the planner was saying, and, and that it's gonna be very minimal, it's not, it's not coming and going, you know, every thirty minutes around the clock by any means, but, I mean, I can't, I can't sit here and say that there'll never be a time that a truck won't be there at one in the morning. You know, that's just not gonna be accurate.
Okay. But the, the, the five, the number five vehicles per day on average is?
I, I, I would, I would, I would banty that to be a good guess, sure.
Okay, I agree, thank you. Unless the, any of the commissioners have any questions, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Don't move.
Support.
By Turner, support by DeSeco, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion, motion carries. So our recommendation this evening must be based on the following standards. Compatibility with adjacent land uses, consistent with and promote the intent and purpose of the special land use. Compatibility with the natural environment, consistent with the capacities of public services, facilities affected by the proposed use, protect the public health, safety, and welfare, and the adequacy of public access to the site. This evening, we can recommend approval of this request, disapprove of the request, or we can table it to evaluate it further. Unless there are questions, I'll entertain a motion. Chairman? Mr. Turner?
I'll move to approve site plan number twenty, dash, twenty-seven, SLU, ten, Joel Ballard, forty-seven, six, eleven, Ryan Road, located on the west side of Ryan Road, north of Auburn Road. Outdoor parking of vehicles, subject to the submission of a revised site plan, addressing all department comments, and obtaining a valid certificate of occupancy from the Shelby Township Building Department.
Is there support for that motion?
Or?
That was from Moore?
Raquel.
Thank you. And he's been moved and supported, any questions on the motion? Hearing none, Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Flynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Oppone?
Yes.
Commissioner Meredith?
Yes.
Commissioner DeSeco?
Yes.
And Chair will chess. Good luck, Mr. Ballard.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next item is site plan number two, zero, dash, one, eight, Rudy Catula, five, eight, eight, five, twenty-three mile road. Is the petitioner here, a representative? Okay, I see two gentlemen with a gas ST, so I'm assuming that might be you guys. Alright, so if I get your name and address, name and address, and what you're requesting from this body, what are you, what are you planning on doing, what would you like us to approve?
So my name's David Youssef, and the address is five, eight, eight, five, twenty-three. So my name is David Youssef and the address is five eight eight five twenty-three mile road. And we are actually requesting to put an addition in the back to be as storage because we have no storage and we need to add some storage to the gas station.
Okay. Are you, are you just adding in addition? Are you, are you going to sort of remodel the building? Is there any other improvements, any other landscaping, any other?
Good evening.
Yes.
Yes. My name Imad Poters. I'm the architect from Futuristic Design. I prepared the site plan and the floor plans elevations for the project. I'm here with David. Yeah, the, the applicant is requesting a storage area in the back. And the, the, actually, the gas station is already remodeled. It's in a good shape. And what we're trying to do is just make the new addition look like the same face break with the APIS, whatever features we see, architectural features on the building will maintain that. And of course, we added some landscaping, all the, the missing items in the parking, the barrier-free sign. And we're going to remove that septic field. A new engineering will be done to tap the, to the, to the existing sanitary line. I have my engineer working on that, but we're waiting for site plan approval so we can move on the construction documents. So actually, I need this space for storage, adding more walk-in cooler and he needs a space for all his merchandise. And if you see my elevations, everything looks like the same exact existing gas station elevations. We try to maintain the building the way it is.
Okay, all right, thank you. Let me, I'm going to bring the planner in to offer his comments. Nick?
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you, sir.
So like the applicant said, it's a thousand-square-foot addition. It adds a walk-in cooler, storage space, office space, and relocates the bathroom inside the building. The exterior of the addition will match the current elevations of the building, so it'll be the same brick with the stone accent pieces. They do bring these sites in line with the zoning district standards as far as landscaping goes for this district. They've added trees. They've enhanced landscaping quite a bit over what exists now. And overall, it's a, it's a pretty straightforward site plan. They went through the preliminary review phase, so a lot of the preliminary concerns were addressed during that phase. I only have five comments to walk through, so I'll go through those right now. The first one is a pretty simple site plan comment, just identifying the easements with library and page number. Second, indicate the setback distance from the south and east edges of the building to the center line of twenty-three mile road and Mount Road respectively. Third, indicate that there will be no roof mounted equipment or that the roof mounted equipment will be screened. And fourth, from the engineer, identify any wall mounted equipment and provide screening details. And from the building department, provide a walkway at the rear exit to the delivery door.
Yes.
Okay. To the board, are there any questions on, on from either to the planner or the petitioner? Saying none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Moore?
I move to approve site plan twenty dash eighteen for Rudy Catula, five eight eight five twenty-three mile road parcel number twenty-three dash zero seven dash seventeen dash four seventy-nine dash zero zero seven, located on the northwest corner of twenty-three mile road and Mount Road. Marathon gas station renovation subject to the submission of a revised site plan addressing all department comments.
Support.
Okay, moved by Moore, supported by Turner. Are there any questions on the motions? Hearing none. Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Flynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Oppone?
Yes.
Commissioner Meredith?
Yes.
Commissioner DeCico?
Yes.
And the turbo chess. Good luck, gentlemen.
Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. The next item is another public hearing rezoning and it's both a rezoning petition and a, a site plan. Rezoning petition number zero five dash two zero and site plan number two zero dash two two. This item under after review has a number of issues and, and I guess I'm, I'm, I'm going to pose to my colleagues to question whether, and, and to the petitioner. Because I'm going to have to ask the planner to offer her comments in advance of this and whether we postpone until some of these things. It's, it's a little, because I, I mean, there are just, there are just another, a number, I think, a number of a number of items that probably should be addressed before we take a look at this in greater detail. So I'm going to ask the petitioner, the, the planner to offer her thoughts on, on this. And then we can just kind of decide how we want to go forward. Julie?
Thank you, Chairman. As far as the rezoning request goes, I think this is appropriate. It's consistent with the master plan and I believe it's a good transitional use between the commercial and the residential to the east. The only issues that I, I had with this is this was, I believe, the old DPW garage site and there may, maybe some contaminants on the site. So first and foremost, I think that needs to be looked into to see if there's any contamination on the site before we proceed. As far as the site plan goes, like I said, I think duplexes is a good transitional use between these two properties. I certainly think it would enhance the neighborhood and clean up the site. Certainly not opposed to it. I think it's a great idea. The only thing is, I think there's some details on the site plan that need to be addressed that are pretty significant. One of them being that this is sort of a multiple-family district and it needs to meet the multiple-family district requirements and as far as open space, recreation area, interior setbacks, building separation, screening and landscaping. For one, major screening is required along the west property line between the C two, C two zoning. And what that entails is a minimum buffer zone of twenty-five feet. And there's some, you know, either a decorative wall or some landscaping that needs to go there and that wasn't indicated on the site plan. I think this could change the site plan significantly once all these items are taken care of. Parking spaces, there was no parking spaces that were designated for, for guests. Elevations and floor plans would be required. And another issue is if the duplexes will have basements. So depending on if they have basements or not, there will be, you know, more recreational area required. And again, like I said, sanitary sewer is also located on the west side of Ande. So I think it's going to be significant to bring that sanitary sewer across the Ande and over to this property. So I just wanted to, you know, make sure the applicant and the engineer are aware of all these items and have that taken care of and, you know, looked at a little bit closer before we can, you know, either proceed with the rezoning, you know, and the site plan itself.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Who's?
Me, Mike.
Yeah, Mike.
Yeah, I, I'm telling on what you just mentioned and what the planner just outlined, there's a number of issues with this development that may end up precluding even putting something there. So for us, I see it looks like there's about thirty people that want to weigh in on it, but there's no sense in any discussion from us or the public at this point, considering we don't even know if it'll be buildable. So we could spend the next two hours debating the color of the drapes and we don't even know if there's going to be, it's going to be buildable. So why don't we, why don't we just table this right now and, and bring it back for a public hearing at a future date, once he knows the answer to the contamination issue and can address some of the planner's other concerns. That would be my suggestion.
Okay. Tell you what, if you want to make that as a motion, I'll ask
Yeah, I'd move the table if there's support, sub, subject to addressing the main issue. And for the folks listening at home, I see there's quite a few and I looked at this, there's a, you know, there's a bunch of neighborhoods behind there and I understand your concern, but let's find out if it's even buildable before we, we talk about it. So that's the motion is to table it.
Okay, thank you. Is there support? And who supported?
That was me.
DeCico? Right, okay. How about some discussion on the motion? Do, do any of the commissioners feel strongly one way or the other? Okay. I, yeah, I just, you know, thank, thank you, Mr. Flynn. I just think, I mean, let's just be clear as about what, what, you know, what we're, what we're going to discuss and comment on because clearly, you know, I mean, the first question, is it even the probable property even developable? Then, you know, in terms of, I think we need a little bit more, more robust site plan that, 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 if, if it were to be rezoned, addresses a number of those issues. So with that, I will call the roll. Commissioner Flynn?
Yeah. Yes.
Commissioner DeCico?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Oppone?
Yes.
Commissioner Meredith?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
And the turbo chess. So just, so anyone that, if, if you receive notice, you will get, you will receive notice again when this does get rescheduled. If you have any questions or, or comments you wish this board or the planning department to consider, please feel free to, to, to reach out to the township offices. They are still working. So, but, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll absolutely sort of tread cautiously on this one. So, all right, with that, is there a planning director's report?
I don't have anything at this time, Chairman.
Okay. Business from the Ford, does anyone wish to comment?
I wish to speak, please.
You have three, you have three minutes.
Okay, I kind of want to go back to addressing the, the areas along Ryan Road. As the planning, as you as the planning commission, what can we do going forward to make this property more presentable to better clientele other than just parking lots? This, this area we know is contaminated. What can we do to get the, the DEQ involved or whatever they're called nowadays? The local governments, maybe the, the county. And maybe Michael Flynn can do something positive for a change and loosen up the purse strings and maybe do something to spend some money to make that presentable, whether we need to get in touch with the landowners that don't seem to want to do anything. I know it's got to be expensive and you can laugh all you want, Flynn.
All right, all right, why don't you took, cut him off? Is there anyone else wishes, wish to comment? Saying none, is there a motion to adjourn?
Standby, sir. We have one person.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
All move, Mr. Chairman.
Is there support?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Everyone be safe.